All right.
Hi.
Hello. Doing some work while you're, while I'm reading, getting ready.
I signed in and realized I had to sign out and sign back in as the host, so. But I thought of that before I did anything else.
And how is everybody healthy?
Yeah, we are. How are, how are you, Dan? How's your family doing?
Everyone's good, so can't complain, knock on wood. You do, you do what you need to, to get ready. I don't want to interrupt you.
We'll see how this Zoom thing goes. I've been in plenty of Zoom meetings, but I have not run one before, so.
So, I have a question for you. When we vote, do we have to roll call vote?
I think we should. It's up to our discretion, but I think it would probably be better if we just do it that way. Does that make sense?
Well, I ran the collaborative meeting and there's like, there was like 22 people.
Right, right.
We just did it voice and everybody voted. It was unanimous every vote.
Yeah, yeah.
But, and someone said, oh, I just saw something that said we have to roll call vote.
That's not what I read, that we don't have to. But, you know, I think it depends on what we're voting. I mean, when we do policies, you know, generally, you know, like certain things, we tend to vote unanimously, so it might depend on what we're voting on.
Yeah, so I'm fine if you just went with voting, normal.
Yeah, I mean, we don't want to extend.
Yeah, it's, I mean, me, I was thinking 22 people, it's a roll call.
Right. Yeah, no, I don't, I don't believe you have to. That's not my understanding.
Good.
Yeah, we didn't roll call when we did New Salem, Wendell, and Leverett, so I think we could be okay.
Good.
I mean, I guess we could just do the vote and then if there, it seemed like there was any lack of clarity, then we'll do a roll call. Why don't we leave it that way?
Yeah, I just, yeah, with the roll call, it just takes so much longer, so.
Right.
Jen, how come I don't see you?
I'm here.
Okay. Oh, I have to do that thing, hold on.
Yeah.
Let me figure this out. Oh, it's over here. There we go.
Yeah.
I'm so used to Google Hangouts.
Yeah, me too. We've been using Hangouts, although I've done some Zoom, but switching back and forth is interesting.
Yes.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Trevor.
Hi, Jen.
Hey.
So we'll just, I think Katie's coming, so we'll just wait.
Jen, did you just hear a lawnmower go by your house?
That's not the strangest thing that would happen in Chutesbury. Actually, I probably did. I thought it was my neighbor because he's driving around his, like, lawnmower as a tractor, like, so.
I picked up my lawnmower at your neighbor's. He put new belt on.
That's great. That's so funny. That's great. Was that Greg, Steve, or Roland? Because it was Roland, Roland, yeah, that's great.
I think we have to all, you know, be aware that dogs and children and random noises may happen at any time. I'm sure I'm not alone in that. I was realizing today, I tried to go outside to get some time to myself and then they followed me out there, so. This doesn't happen. We'll probably be interrupted by one of our households at some point, but I think everybody's here, so. Let's call the meeting to order. We need to just take attendance. Trevor, I see everybody's here, so I don't think we have to go through and, we can, I think we can see, I can, we can see everybody, so I don't think we have to go through and. It's, can you see everybody, Trevor? You're muted.
Um, yeah, so I can't actually stream video because I have crappy satellite internet out in the woods and Wendell. Um, but yeah, so I see everybody. I mean, you know, I don't, there's Katie. I don't see video from Steven, but I'm assuming that's him, so.
Okay, so I'll, I'll call the meeting to order. It's a 7:02, and I need to start off by reading. The following, following the governance restrictions on public meetings, this meeting is being held virtually using zoom.com for remote participation. The public may access following the instructions on this meeting's agenda posted on the town calendar, which is posted at If despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide real-time access, the public can request a recording of this meeting by contacting the town clerk. Okay, and then, before we get started, I just wanted to say, right now it's just us, but I want to get this, this message out, that I want to take the opportunity to offer my gratitude to our staff and administration at SES. Our community has been really well-served by SES during this unprecedented challenge. Our community has teachers who have been working diligently to provide educational content, social connection, and emotional support to students and families while both recognizing the variety of challenges our families are facing and managing their own. They are providing all of this remotely and learning to do so as they go. Jackie and Jessica have ensured that families who need food support get it. They, along with Debbie Lee, made sure that Chromebooks were sanitized and provided curbside for anyone who needed them. Superintendent Hagerty has been providing leadership throughout by staying informed and communicating with stakeholders as often and clearly as possible. And having said all of this, there's even more that's being done that isn't being mentioned here. So the SES community, like the rest of the world, has been deeply affected by this pandemic, but the response has been commendable and we thank you very much.
Here, here.
Okay, so, um, I just want to say too, now that everybody's here, I have done Zoom, but I have not led a Zoom meeting, so we'll, we'll see how this goes and I'm sure that we will run into various technical difficulties in one form or another as we go, as, as long as this, the need for this continues, but.
And there's less than 10, so we don't need our masks, right?
Yeah. Right, and, and we were discussing for, for voting, as we get to that, that we'll, we'll just do a vote, but if it seems unclear, then we will stop and do a roll call. And I don't think we, oh, public hearings, we do have some public here, so if you, if you have something that you would like to say, let us know, I guess. I'm not sure how to tell here.
Aw, man, Katie just signed on. She didn't get to hear what you said, Lauren. That was so nice.
Oh, you were trying to use the phone. Okay.
That was her phone.
Well, we just, I was just saying, I'm sure I'm speaking for the entire committee, that we're very grateful to our, to our SES staff for everything that, that everybody's been doing.
Thank you very much. No, I did hear it. I, I appreciated it.
Did you have anything that you needed to share with us, Katie? You're our public at the moment.
Oh, uh, no, I think Jackie and I are all on the same page.
Okay, okay, so review of agenda and perpetual calendar.
Everything looks good.
Everything looks good. All right. Okay, warrants and gifts? Do we have any? Okay.
I'll motion to approve the minutes from February 13.
I just want to say one thing. There was, there's one spot in the minutes where it says RCS instead of RSC. It's the, uh, let's see if I can find it. Um, it's the first mention of the regional school committee and it says, RC, my first thought was about how Jen really loves when we use the acronyms and the numbers. The letters were mixed up and so at first I was confused, but it just needs to be changed from RCS to RSC.
See why we don't use acronyms?
Because I was reading it going RCS, what is that? Yeah, but, okay, that said.
I do have warrants.
Oh, you do? Okay.
I do. You ready, Trevor? All right, I have two payroll warrants, number 319, for $68,926.09 on 3/9/20. Number 320 from 3/23/20 for $70,335.31. I have a warrant number 3016 from 3/12/20, in a total amount of $7,911.74. And number 3015 from 2/26/20, in the amount of $28,324.78. And that's it.
Thank you. Okay. Back to the minutes, so. Dan.
I'll get the, Trevor, I'll get you copies of those.
He wrote them in the chat, Stephen, if you can see the chat to check them, I think.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, just make sure those are, those are right. Let me know.
They're right.
Dan, you want to, you want to say what you said before? Do you want to move, make this, just make the same motion for the minutes that you did before?
Yep, it's already on the table, so we're just waiting for a second.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, extension? Okay, unfinished business or updates? Nothing? New business? There's a lot of new business, a lot of things to talk about. The first thing on our list is the change to the academic calendar. Did you want to talk about that at all, Jackie, or?
Yeah, so I can talk and then Jackie can jump in. So when all of this first started, we were thinking by the time we got to April vacation, the teachers would want some time, some downtime, and in talking to all of the teachers across Union 28, it was really quite unanimous to hear that people didn't want to lose the momentum of remote learning, and so I, I went to Jackie's faculty meeting at SES virtually, and I heard from staff who overwhelmingly would like to work through April vacation, save for Patriots Day, which is a state holiday, so it would be four days of April vacation. After further discussion, whether we are back or not in May, we have a full-day professional development day on May 22, and we would like to work through that as well. Because if we're not back, it's one day more we can do remote learning. If we are back, and that, I'm not sure that's a possibility, but if we are back, it would be great to have more time with the students, and so we're asking tonight to change the FY 20 academic calendar so that staff is working the four days of April vacation and the May 22nd professional development day. Jackie, I don't know if I hit on everything, or there's more you'd like to say?
No, that sounds great. It was a unanimous decision by the staff, or request of the staff.
Still moved?
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
So that would make our last day in Chutesbury, June 12.
For students.
For students, yes. I'm sorry. Thank you, Jackie, for filling in that very important piece. Yes, thank you. And I have to say, I, I'm just so impressed with everything the staff has done. No one's ever done anything like this before and we had no preparation time, and I click on the SES website and I, I've attended some staff meetings and the amazing work that, that is going on in Chutesbury Elementary is beyond amazingly wonderful, and so then I hear the teachers say, nope, we're just going to keep going, when they're working so hard. I, I'm just so honored and thrilled to be a part of Union 28 in Chutesbury Elementary. This is just amazing. So thank you for supporting the wishes of the staff, school committee. It's much appreciated.
I will say that it's amazing, but not at all surprising.
I concur.
Jump in. I think it's really, it's something to figure out the curriculum, like, all by itself, that's like huge, but also putting all of that together and then also figuring out how to make it really work for families and what they're up against right now, like, it's a whole other element of that, and so I, I think they're just doing an amazing job.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, so we voted on that, right?
Yes, we did.
Okay, I thought we did. Fiscal year 21 academic calendar.
Yes, so originally the calendar we proposed as a leadership team for 2021 was beginning staff on August 24. Students would begin on the 26th of August, and we would end on the 11th. And then Amherst is starting on, I believe, the 2nd. And so we have some varying days for calendars within Union 28, and I know it was talked about a little bit at the previous Chutesbury School Committee, and so what we're here to do is to vote on a calendar, but I'm opening it up, or I guess Lauren can open it up for discussion, about when we want to start in Chutesbury, so please know Leverett is following Amherst's calendar. Irving has not voted because we were supposed to have a meeting and we had school closure, and Swift River is following the proposed calendar, the draft calendar that the leadership team came up with, and so I'm going to turn it over to you, Lauren. I think we should have a discussion about what it looks like for Chutesbury.
Jackie, there was a, an opinion from the staff, correct?
Yes, um, well, we, I got people's opinions before all of this happened, and it was a mixed review of wanting to start on the earlier date and wanting to start on the late date. It was actually pretty even, but then when I asked again, actually just last week, I don't remember if it was last week or this week. I gave three options. I, I gave option one, which was the proposed start date of the 24th, I believe, for teachers, and then I gave option two, which was that, that mixture date that someone here brought up. I don't know if it was Katie or Dan, or I don't know who, but that was the teachers starting on the Thursday, Friday, and the kids starting on the Monday. And then I gave option three, which was the same as Amherst start, and overwhelmingly they voted for option three, which was the Amherst start. Um, I think there was maybe two votes of a different nature, and Katie, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure that that's what it was.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that was the staff's input.
And is that your recommendation?
I am so amazed by this staff and I trust their professionalism and I trust them being able to tell me what they need, so I'm, I'm, I lean towards wanting to support them, however, I also know that as a leadership team, we thought of the 24th for a reason, but the world has changed since then, so I'm, I'm, I'm wanting to support my staff at this time. But I will make anything work.
And you get to make it work?
Yeah, and so the one thing we would lose is opening day altogether, but the lesson we've learned from COVID-19, one of them, one of the many, is flexibility, and so we can connect as a district on our first full-day professional development day. And so I want to support my staff across all four schools, and I don't think we'll lose anything as a district. I think our connection is stronger than that, and so if I can support the teachers, my recommendation would be to go with what they chose.
I'll make a motion.
Before you do that, Dan, what was your reasoning, Jen, for wanting to, what was the leadership's team reasoning? I, I'm sorry, I was not at that last meeting.
That's fine, because we would get out the 11th, so following the proposed calendar. Five inclement weather days would bring us to the 18th. If we start with Amherst, it shifts it by a whole week, and we know how snowy it is in Chutesbury and New Salem and Wendell and most of our towns, and so we were thinking ahead relative to inclement weather days, but.
We're going to be getting out very, very, very late.
Yep, yep. But Jackie and I and the staff can make things work. Clearly, that has been seen through this closure, so.
Jackie, can I? I'm totally in support of following the recommendation from the teachers and from, from you in Chutesbury, but I'm also curious, like, was there, like, a marked shift in the reasons why people felt? Like, just so I can sort of hold that over.
Um, Katie, maybe you can speak to it. I, I don't, there, there wasn't a really huge one. I think in some people's minds, there's a couple of things. There's the hope that maybe they can have a vacation in later August. There is a hope that if we push it back, then maybe we will get to start at school too, and I think they want to be with Amherst too, thinking about our families that share children.
Oh, I forgot about that. That, that did come up a little bit, but yeah, otherwise I didn't really hear why people chose what they chose. I did, I know people want, like, starting on a Wednesday, as opposed to. Oh, right, yeah, they like the gradual. Starting on a Monday. With the kids, but in terms of one week versus the other week, I didn't hear why people changed their minds.
Yeah, the gradual start, I forgot, was a big thing for kids.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to approve option three. Jackie, maybe you could repeat that, what that was, the starting date.
Yeah, that means that, um, that teachers go back August 30th and students go back, wait.
No, it was the 31st.
31st, and the students go back the 2nd of September.
Okay, that's my motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I'm sorry if you hear a dog eating a bone, because that is literally what my dog is doing right here.
My dog can open my door, and so I keep waiting for her to come barging in. Okay, identification of school choice seats.
So we know this is sort of the time of year where we talk about identifying, do we have seats available, and then I, are we going to vote to be a school of choice? We do need to let the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education know this decision by June 1st, and so, given sort of the scheduling issues, we usually do March and then April, and then we have the information to send. But we have both of those items here tonight. Are there available school choice seats, and then are we voting to be a school of choice?
Uh, before we move on, could I just verify the dates of the calendar, so starting September 2nd, and what was the ending date?
Oh. Um, let me, I have to look.
Hold on, I have to call it back up.
It was, the start date is actually September 2nd.
The end date would be the 18th, I believe.
And then with the five days.
The five days of inclement weather that we have to schedule is the 25th, it looks like.
That would be the snae.
Okay, thank. Okay, thank you.
The what?
Snae. It's not snow, it's sno- snowy rain.
That's true. The snae is the worst.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um, I think that was a DPW term.
Make sure you get that, Trevor.
He did.
Okay, so.
What is the recommendation from the principal? School choice?
Um, I, I request that we open it for the school.
And we do have some available seats, Jackie?
We do. And you all know that my procedure is, I really only take them up until third grade, unless there's a sibling, and only if there's, uh, 15 or less in a class.
I'll motion to remain a school of choice.
I can second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Hand wash fountains. Um, so Jackie, what, where, where does that stand? Have you?
Um, this, this was not brought up by me. This was something thought of in the community, by somebody in the community, you know, really thinking on what they can do, I think, to help support the school. I think that's where it's coming from. Um, and their thought, at least in their emails to me, was that, um, we should have at least one, if not multiple, easier hand washing fountains. And, uh, she asked if I was interested in this, and I'm interested in anything the community wants to kind of spearhead. That sounds great. Um, but I, I needed, like, my head custodian, and I had to talk to Jen and my head custodian to see, like, where we would even put it, and where it could be, and where it needs to be with the pipes and the whatever. Um, so, I mean, I, we're in very beginning stages. Like, this is not something that I have do- put a lot of time into, because I've been worried about everything else. Um, would it be helpful to have? Sure. Um, uh, I just don't exactly know where it would be, and I don't think I can really designate a lot of time into my, like, planning of it for a little bit of time.
It seems reasonable to me that we could say that, um, it's something that, that we could look into, but that we, we can't immediately look into it, probably, because there are more emerging concerns. But is, but would that be something you'd be willing to look into at some point?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, I will definitely look into it. I mean, it could be super helpful, especially now, after now. Um, I just, I just haven't had the time to talk with Matt and Andy, and like, look at the school, and even like, understand where it would go, or, you know, anything like that.
So Jackie, can I ask you a question?
Uh-huh.
I'm wondering if it might be helpful to have, like, somebody else, sort of, any sort of thing, to come up with a proposal. You know what I mean? So like, because you're gonna have way too much to do to be looking into this. So maybe someone else can do that?
Yeah, I, the hard thing is, is this was a, this was something thought of by a town, I think, wanting to really help the school. It was a, an idea from someone in the town to me. It wasn't originated by me, and so I don't exactly know who to put in charge of that, because everyone right now is, even my custodians are at their max in doing other things.
Jackie, what about the wellness committee?
The wellness committee is an offshoot of my school council, and that's me. So, um, so, yes, but I would, I kind of want the person who brought it up to me to kind of help with the spearheading of it, I think.
Well, maybe they could come up with sort of what their thoughts were, and then present it, and then we could decide if we want to do something with it, because it does seem like it's, that's gonna be a big endeavor.
Yeah.
And it might not be even be something that, logistically, is, uh, a project we can take on anytime in the near future, as helpful as it might be.
Yeah.
Maybe, um.
Especially for the little kids, it could be really cool. Like, maybe we just look into a spot and near the little kid part of the building, that could be helpful. Um, you know, especially like, the ones that are constantly like, nah. Um, so like, it really could, like, near the preschool and kindergarten could be super helpful, but I just haven't, you're right. We need to, like, designate a little time for that, when I can also, like, allow people in the building, which is, but we're not even doing that right now.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so, well, table.
But I am super grateful that people are trying to think of ways to help.
Yeah.
Can I say that with that hand washing fountain, that we also make it slash hydration station?
It's a good idea.
Thank you.
Um, okay. Uh, next on the agenda is the superintendent evaluation. Um, I, I sent, I sent everybody, um, on the committee, some information from the MASC. And I, it's, I feel like, um, we, we can't evaluate Jennifer on goals that stopped being in her, in, even in her sights after the schools closed. So what we can do is evaluate, um, where she was with her goals up to that point. And we could also, uh, just the, I'm just sharing my thoughts with you, and then I'd like to hear yours. We could also, because the town meeting date has been pushed back, we could also push back the dates for, uh, completing the evaluations, um, so that Jennifer doesn't even have to really, present anything at all as quickly. My concerns, really, I want to make sure that, that we're being, uh, we need to, to do an evaluation, but we need to be fair and reasonable, and not put anything more on top of Jennifer's plate when she's, um, obviously dealing with a lot, uh, as we all are right now. So does anybody have any thoughts you want to share about how we manage that?
No, I would say I agree with you. I think that we should, um, do an evaluation based upon performance and where she is, and where she was with her goals. Um, I agree, it would be nice. It's nice to do the evaluation, because it's a great opportunity to recognize what Jennifer has done. And also, you know, this has been a very trying time, and so, you know, somehow incorporating, you know, performance with that, and let's give her a great performance review and move on.
Right, right. And with the, um, the guidance from the MASC is that, you know, with, with goals that couldn't possibly have been met, that we just say that she, you know, if we feel that she's progressing on those goals, then we say that significant progress has been made. And then, um, you know, if that's a goal that, goals may change, with, with, uh, everything else that's changing, but if goals continue, then, then, um, you know, she can continue with some of the same goals, but that we can just, um, that the, that, goals that can't have been met, we can't say that they have, but we can say that significant progress has been made.
And will we able, will we be able to do this electronically?
Uh, I, as of this moment, would say no, but, um, I don't know if that's going to stay true. We'll, we'll, let me get back to you on that.
Okay.
Um.
Good, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Could you reach out, or, or someone reach out to Bill Deal, just to see the format that they're using at the collaborative? Because it is so simple. It is like two pages with some dots. It is so easy, and it's tabulated automatically. Again, it's like, it's like a survey sort of thing. I mean, it, I just find it so easy, and it's, you know, we have, you know, 34 people filling it out. So maybe there's some way of replicating it, or, I don't know. And I said Jennifer, just because, you know, uh, I know you have contact with Bill, and, but Jackie, maybe you could.
I think, I can, um, contact him, Jennifer, don't, I, I can.
Um, and just keep Pam in the loop, because she's like my little super tech assistant, and she'd be totally helpful, um, if you need her to be. Um, she found me Genius Scan, which is on my handy-dandy iPhone, and now I know how I could scan some samples of my documents for folks with my iPhone at home, so, um, we can make it work. However, whenever people want to do it, as long as I have a little lead time, I promise I won't scan the amount of documents I usually put in my little box. I'll do a sampling, and then maybe a list and an explanation. I'll try to be succinct.
Thank you.
And my personal feeling is, Jennifer, I don't even know if you even need to do all that. You've got so much on your plate right now. I would just, just throw out the evaluation. I mean, you know, give us all, we'll just do the evaluation.
Okay. Whatever you all need me to do or not do, I'll do it.
I think that's, I think people can ask for things when they have questions, or-
Okay.
There is just too much going on.
The easiest thing. And then, you know, and then you can use your handy-dandy scanner. But to scan, you don't need to scan everything, when people might not even ask to see it.
Exactly.
Um, okay.
Thank you. Well, whatever you need me to do, and whenever you need it done, I, Lauren, you can let me know, and I'm totally fine.
Because we do have, uh, we have town meeting at the end of June.
Yeah.
So ideally, we would have our Shute's Berry evaluations done before that time. Or either the evaluation's done, or some, um, communication around them being done before that time, let's put it that way. Just, uh, we have, Steve and Dan are running for their seats, so presumably, we will have the same school committee that we have now. But, um, just for good, just for the sake of, that's, we want to start to have these things, um, in line before our town meeting, so just, we'll, we'll aim for that. So that means that I'll, I'll, um, get things out to y'all as quickly as possible, and then we can just ask Jennifer anything that we feel like we need to know. Does that work for everybody?
Absolutely. Make it simple, make it easy, even use a Survey Monkey, whatever.
Okay, all right. Uh, superintendent's report.
Yes, so I'll just give you sort of a, a really brief nutshell of what's been going on since we last were together, um, which is everything. Um, so I started looking back at my notes, and all of this really started to come to coalesce back at the end of February. And so I started working on an IT disaster response plan with SUSE RIT. While we were still in school, I contacted all our local boards of health, including the Eastern Franklin County Health District personnel. People were really wonderful. We communicated either in person or via email, and, um, in the world of It's a Small World, someone on the Shute's Berry Board of Health, I used to work with in Orange, and so it was nice to reconnect, although not for the greatest reason. It was nice to reconnect with, um, Noreen Pease. Um, and then there's been meetings, meetings and more meetings, um, with leadership team, with the Franklin County Superintendents, who have been a wonderful group, with the Hampshire County Superintendents, and then through the collaborative, bringing us both together, and so just sharing lots of information. Lots of meetings with the Massachusetts Superintendents, with our Commissioner of Education, with the State Director of Special Education, with the Department of Health, with Jay Sullivan, who's in finance. I attended a meeting with, um, the Senate and House Ways and Means Committee. They had more technical difficulties than we do out in Western Mass. Um, I want to say, we make it work out here. And just the, the plans that I've seen, um, in all of our Union 28 schools are just fantastic. And this was happening before we even got the guidance documents from the department. I've been trying to, uh, keep parents and families abreast of any, any sort of Union 28 global issues, knowledge, information. I know principals are contacting parents and families all the time, but I've tried to reach out as superintendent to them, um, trying to keep the committees informed. Amy, our Director of Learning, has been working with me around offering professional development for staff members, pairs. Um, the leadership team and I tried to frame what we expect, or guidelines for work hours for our staff. Um, and I recently shared, I think, what is a really important guy, guideline, right? Balance, flexibility, connection, and well-being. I mean, that's really what we're talking about here. Um, yes, academics are important, but we're in unprecedented times, and if, um, we can operate under that mantra of balance, flexibility, connection, and emotional well-being, I, I think we're doing everything we need to do, and then some. We have no further guidance from the department around closure. We're closed, as you know, until at least May 4th. Um, what I heard from Commissioner Riley, I don't know, one day this week, whatever day that was, they all, all those Zoom meetings tend to blend together, but we're supposed to be hearing from the governor, um, sometime soon. I mean, I've, I've heard the phrase, guidance will be coming, uh, updated soon, more often than not in these big statewide meetings. And we-
And don't forget our favorite, it's a local decision.
Yes, it's a local decision, um, which means, like, I don't want to say it, so you say it. Uh, I, but I just have to say, you know, working with the people I work with in the leadership team, it's, it's been amazing and fantastic and wonderful, and none of us really ever thought we would be operating this way. And here we are, and I think we're doing it, um, as best we can, and I think we're doing it with grace and with compassion, and, um, I, I'm so happy that I'm here. I, I, I listened to some other superintendents, and I want to say, okay, maybe we don't have the greatest bandwidth, and some of us don't have broadband, but we got a great place here. Um, and the, I had to call the commissioner, and I have not the greatest cell reception, and so I had already sent him a survey about the lack of internet access, among many other things, in Western Mass, in particular, my school district. And I missed his call, and so when I called back, I said, oh, yeah, if I move in my house out of my office, which used to be my guest room, I have really not a lot of cell reception, but you know how that is up in Rest, Western Massachusetts, right, Commissioner? Oh, yes, oh my, he said. So, you know, I, I really wanted to advocate for, and I know he knows it, and he is, you know, I think, hearing what we have to say, but I don't think he has any idea of what remote learning looks like in our towns. And I want to say, I think we're doing a better job than some of our Eastern Mass towns that have broadband access, so, that's sort of the last month and a half in a nutshell, and kudos to my leadership team. Kudos to all of the staff in all four Union 28 schools. They are, and I don't even know what word is better than amazing and awesome, but they are. So that's my report for this evening.
Jennifer, um, before we move on, I, I, one thing that's been on my mind, and I think you and I talked about it a little bit, is, you know, when all of this happened, the neediest of our population, um, there, the inequities are highlighted. And I think as we move forward, it would be helpful to, um, to really make note of the kinds of things that have, that have become more glaring and more apparent, so that we can do, in whatever ways we can, um, if nothing else, then to advocate, you know, better and more often for our families. in whatever ways we can, if nothing else, then to advocate, you know, better and more often for our families, but to, to just try to make note of the things that have come to the forefront.
I think that's a great idea. And you and I, I think we're in the same equity talk today. And one of the superintendents said, don't let a good crisis go to waste. In other words, what lessons are we going to learn in order to provide access and equity to all of our students moving forward?
Yeah, I do think we have to see that part of it as an opportunity. You know, if, if, if we, we have shut everything down and rebuilt in, you know, a half a day or essentially to keep moving. And when we go back, we don't know what that's going to look like either. And so we have to look at things that, I mean, if we're, we're not starting, we're not starting from zero, we're not starting from square one. But if we, when we go back, we can think about things that might need changing and now would be a good time to change them. And then also prepare for, for the, in any ways that we can for future issues similar to this, or even not even necessarily issues similar to this, but things that are, were less apparent before that impact.
But now are glaringly apparent. Yep.
So, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Bruce, your turn.
Thanks. And as you know, like Jen said, things are going really well. Central office is kind of dispersed now, but each one of my group is going in once every other week, at least. Meg's going in on payroll days to do payroll. Emily's going in twice a week to do warrants, so we can keep processing our bills and stuff. And, and I'm going in on Wednesdays and doing mail and banking business and whatever else I can do. So, but everybody's got technology, can work from home, and we're keeping up with things very well. Couple of things, I'm working with a lot of the business administrators in Franklin County who have Cosmeskus as a contractor for their transportation to work out a fair reduced price for transportation. We've had several meetings with the Department of Ed on about how this is going to work. But, you know, we're trying to keep the contractor in business while saving us some money in the process. So we're working hard at that. Hopefully we'll have a resolution in the next couple of weeks. Looks like we'll be saving in excess of twenty percent of our monthly fee for the couple of months that we may not be transporting kids. So whatever we can save is a savings. Haven't heard anything from MSBA. I contacted them and I think they're doing the same thing as we are, working from home. So hoping to hear what their status is. There was a notice that came out with our, from our Masbo group that the MSBA is still financially sound and are funding projects. And they plan to fund projects normally for at least this year. We also have some good news, as you know, we use potentially some rural aid in our budget for next year. We have some money this year that we're not, that we probably won't use right now and we can roll it into next year. So we're looking forward to at least supplementing our budget with some rural aid next year. So I think that goes. We're still paying everybody, including the food service and after-school people, the directors anyway, just to keep them off of unemployment. It's kind of like six of one, half a dozen the other. We pay them or the town pays them. So, and I think that's going to
Well, and Gail is also doing a lot of work now.
Yeah. And I was, I was going to get to that next and that'll segue into Jackie a little bit. Food services, I've been working with the food service directors of all four schools because they've allowed some waivers for us to feed our needy children and even our not needy children in the district and get reimbursed at the free rate for meals that we serve. So, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about it, Jackie, or you want me to continue, but
Yeah, I have it as part of my principal's report.
Okay, so, you know, we're
I'll talk about our plan that we have.
Yeah, we're working to take care of the kids while they're not, not at school, make sure they get fed, get reasonable meals. So, but that said, that's what I have.
And everything else has a giant question mark.
Yeah, we're, next year's budget from the state level is, is concerning.
Yeah, I sent a little synopsis out to school committee members after the Senate and the House Ways and Means Economic Roundtable. As soon as I hear anything, I'll continue to keep you informed. But
But this is why we're not touching that rural aid this year.
Yes.
We're not even touching it so that it's something we can fall back on.
Yeah, and for some reason, the shoe spray budget this year is actually doing much better than it has in years in the past. So I'm feeling real confident that we're going to end the year okay. So, so you said they rescheduled the town meeting, Lauren. When is the town meeting scheduled for now, if we can make it?
I wrote the date as the 27th.
Yes, that's what I have.
June 27th.
June 27th, yep.
They may, they may not have a state budget until well into fiscal 21.
Yeah, what I heard is the Commonwealth will probably be operating on a 1/12 budget.
Jackie?
Yes, I did send out a report. I am going to try to share my screen. So, I hope that it, whoa. Okay, so can you see what I'm doing?
Yes.
Okay, so let me move this, let me go like this. Great. So, um, I did send this out earlier and I'm going to try to talk about this stuff briefly. And I'm also going to try not to cry because this whole kerfuffle that we find ourselves in is super emotional and I'm also just so grateful to the school staff and community, but particularly the staff that makes me very emotional. So, first of all, I really do hope that people have taken the time to look at our learning site that Jen Culbreath actually started. And then the teachers have taken on from there. It is exceptional and the teachers are exceptional. And I have been doing research about what other towns are doing. And I have no problem saying that I have yet to find one that is topping what our teachers are doing. So it's, it's pretty amazing because not only are they being thoughtful about the things that are being put out there, but they're incorporating, our amazing specialists are incorporating art. They have, we have an art website, we have a music website, we have a PE website that kids can go on and actually still have their specials. So under the state guidance, we're working to have about three hours of learning for students per day, and that includes specials. And many classrooms are having virtual meetings one to two times a week right now. We're testing that out. Upper grades are using Google Classroom and other tech tools and lower grades are using videos, Google Docs, Seesaw Epic and other tools that kids are already starting to be used to. There's a lot of communication going on, but we're also trying to be really mindful to not overload it. So teachers are only emailing home up to two times a week, but they're updating their websites daily. And then all the communication that I send home is dated and organized by number and available on the website in order so that people can see all of the communication that comes from the school. And our website has all of these. And I'm just going to click right now. This is our front website, as you all know. Right here you can see that I think it's the six most recent communications. But then you click on this button and it takes you to all of the other communications. So, as you can see, it's, it's all there. We're trying to make it accessible for everybody. And then there's also this little thing, this is how you get to our, right here, learning, at-home learning and resources webpage. And as you can see, there's different links along the side where whenever there's time and kids want to use it, they can. Then there's the teacher's specific website. And since Katie is here with us today, I'll click on Katie's. And you, you, you open it up and on her, it's dated. And so throughout the week, she changes this up. But there's a morning message that she records and the kids can actually watch. Then there's a practice skill that she has recorded and then work that the kids can do. And then it's, you know, reading and different math games and then a specials recess or choice time. And we, a lot of teachers are trying to incorporate outside time. That's just an example of, of one of the things of, that the teachers are doing. That's like pretty amazing and very user-friendly. So please, if you haven't, take the time to click around because it's very heartwarming. We did send a tech survey out. I'm sorry, is someone talking?
I just wanted to make a plug for Moose TV. It's the best thing you'll watch during
Yes.
Season.
It's a, Moose TV is very embarrassing for me, but Jessica and I and Debbie were laughing on the day we were handing out stuff curbside because literally every car said something about Moose TV. And so I was like, well, I guess we're going to have to keep doing it. The tech, the tech survey was sent out to address our tech needs. And also teachers collected this information through conferences, emails or phone calls. And we did distribute thirty-seven devices to families, whether it be a iPad for the, a littler kid or a Chromebook for an older kid. Anybody who demonstrated a need for that device was given one. Debbie Lee is amazing. I will cry if I continue to talk about her too much, but she is my angel in this. And she created a loaning agreement and she prepared all the devices for distribution. And she came in and wiped them down and packed them up and categorized them. And then continues to help all of the teachers all, every day. She helps me every day. And she helps the parents who are freaking out at home about how to utilize resources and sites she's working with them. So she is, she is one amazing lady. In terms of the resource pickup, students in grades kindergarten through five received resources last week from school and that was the device, if they got one. But also depending on the grade, it could have included a new phonics and reading workbook, their math workbooks, notebooks, reading anthologies, magazines, journals and blank books. So Jessica and I went on a hunt around the school. We collected all of these things and we organized all of the things and we bagged all of the things. And then we made a curbside pickup. One hundred percent of the families came to get the stuff. So it was pretty amazing. So I know that all of these resources that the kids, the teachers want the kids to have are in their houses, doesn't mean they're actually necessarily using them all the time, but I know that they're there. And that was also really amazing. In terms of food, you know, this has been something on the mind of a lot of people in our community. And the first week, we had the boxes of food from our kitchen to around sixteen families. The second and third week were the donated food cards from the community. I believe that there were thirty donated food cards. So Jessica was able to distribute that money to families. Then this week, starting this week, we currently have around eighteen families signed up for our Prepared Food slash Boxed Food Program. And so Gail, I was planning on doing bags of food, similarly to what we did at the beginning of this, but with a little more thought around what was in it because we could now order it and be reimbursed for some things. But Gail has also volunteered to make some prepared foods as well. And so what's going to happen is there's a Friday pickup where they will pick up some prepared foods. It's a mixture of prepared and boxed foods. And that will be curbside. And Gail will be putting them right, right in the, the trunks of the cars. And I just want to publicly say a big, huge thank you to Gail for, for all of that. And also to Jessica, who has been the main organizer and communicator for all of the food pieces. She is really, she has owned all of that. And again, I don't, I digest, I don't even know, I don't even know what I'm going to do for some of these people when this is over to thank them because it's, it's really crazy. You know, we're all working like, like no joke, ten to twelve hour days. So it's been really amazing. The staff members are meeting virtually multiple times a week and in, as a whole and in smaller groups. And special education, student support teachers are starting to hold virtual sessions with students in collaboration with families and students. And pairs are working with teachers and they're responding to student work. They're attending meetings, they're taking part in PD. Some of them are in PD through the collaborative. And some are even working virtually with students. Matt and Andy have been amazing and the building is completely disinfected and cleaned. They have been fabulous about all of this. They're continuing with building projects, but whenever Gail enters the building, or if I have to go in the building or Jessica, they completely disinfect any area that we have been in immediately after we're there to just make sure the building is continually clean. In May, we are going to start to think about what recovery education might look like when we return to school in September because we're going to have students, you know, with a, almost a half a year of not the same type of schooling that we're used to. So what that might look like. And also what remote learning might look like if this ever has to extend into the fall months as well. I am dedicated to having a sixth grade graduation. I don't know what that is going to be. I know that it might not happen until September or later. It might not happen until the day before the first day of school for whatever that is. But I am dedicated to having that for them. And even if it has to be outside in an interesting fashion, it's going to happen. So that is something we're thinking about. I am doing Moose TV. The kids like Coco Vincenzo doing funny things and my family likes to make fun of me in those videos. And I'm just, I'm going to stop sharing now. I'm just, you know, really grateful for the whole school community because it's been really interesting and I've learned a lot of things. And I am just so grateful for everybody. And I just want to say a special set, a special shout out to Jen Culkeen because she's an amazing support for me. And I know the rest of the principals, but I'll speak for me.
Now, you're making me cry.
Yeah.
Jackie, thank you for saying that about sixth grade graduation because I know that it's on the minds of all those sixth graders. And my Aiden is about to graduate from high school. And when she graduate, when both she and my male child graduated from shoe spray, I thought we will never be able to do this again because it's small and personal and really special. So I appreciate you, you saying that alleviating their anxiety around it and
I mean, well, like I said, if it has to be the night before the first day of school starts for the, for the, like, I don't know what, when it's going to be able to be, but we're going to make something happen.
Thank you.
Jackie, I have a, I just, I know it's, there's a lot of opportunities for sort of grieving things that are lost. And I think one for the sixth graders is the spaghetti pepper. And I just wonder, like, how are they doing? What are the?
I mean, that's really a parent-run event. So I know that Amy's been talking about it. I mean, she was thinking about sending them. She saw like somewhere is doing like a virtual spaghetti dinner, but it's like, it's like eat spaghetti in your house and sign on to Zoom. You know what I mean? Like, it's not, it's not
Oh, that's even more sad.
I mean, I, I don't mean to be a downer, but I highly doubt we're going to be able to do the traditional spaghetti dinner.
Oh, no.
We might be able to do something like a barbecue, like, I don't know, we can be, try to be creative. Like, maybe they can have like an ice cream shop or something and it's something simple. But like, I, it, I, I don't see us being able to do that huge thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't.
Do something.
Yeah, it's more like, has there been like Amy talking about it with her students and how are, how are the students doing with it? Not, not that it needs to, you know, there are just a lot of things that can't happen the way they normally happen this year.
Yeah, I think the sixth grade is sad for missing their trip and missing their portfolios and missing their spaghetti dinner and missing all the special things that they've been waiting, you know, nine years, some of them nine years for. So uh, it's really hard, right? Just like I can't imagine having a senior in high school like Lauren and missing all of that.
Thanks, Jackie. Um, Steve, Emerys Pelham's report.
I'll keep mine brief. Um, as far as meals, the Emerys Pelham School System is serving two thousand plus meals a week at thirteen sites. And I'm not quite sure of the exact number because now they've added three, three weekend meals of breakfast and lunch also. So I don't know what the exact number is, but it is a lot of food. Um, as far as school choice goes, we voted to not accept school choice at the middle school and high school next year because the um, the graduating class had a small number and the incoming seventh grade has a big number. So they just, they didn't feel comfortable, you know, taking up those classroom seats with out of town people, students. Um, the hotspots, the most students and families now have hotspots and the PGO in four days um was able to raise over twenty-five thousand dollars to help pay for cards for the forty dollar a month service for the hotspots. And it looks like now every student will be able to keep that hotspot through the end of the next school year and they'll be paid for. And the one bummer is that there are ten to twelve seniors who have been working hard all year, getting ready to take the MCAS in May. And the state says that the earliest now they can take it will be sometime in mid-August, if it even happens then. So the earliest they could graduate would be September. And that is my report.
Steve, is, where does the middle school prin- principalship stand? Where, where's that?
They're um, finishing up the, the Pelham Principal Search now. That's in the finalist stage and they're still muddling through the middle school one. It hasn't gotten very far yet.
Thank you. Uh, next is Union Twenty-Eight Report. And there is one. Did uh, you wanna share anything about the collaborative, Dan?
I'll also be brief. Collaborative is in the same boat, uh, really trying to uh manage a workforce who's working from home. Uh, Department of Youth Services has been also affected. So that's uh throughout the whole state of Massachusetts. Um, they are also, uh, there is another collaborative in the state that's having some issues with dealing with some programs and the Collaborative Educational Services looks like it may be taking on some of those additional programs which would fit in with its mission. But same thing, just chaos and, and I feel bad for all of the people that are involved there as well. Everybody is working hard to do the best that they can to support families, students, teachers, and each other.
My parents are really happy about the offerings when the collaborative, especially their, their classes geared towards parents. I think, I think everyone in the region would love even more of that. That's so awesome.
I mentioned that.
Yeah, Dan, that was just wonderful when we got the, the news from Bill Deal about the free professional development offerings for teachers and paraprofessionals. What, what a wonderful service to our staffs.
Great. I'll pass that, pass that on. Thank you.
I'm actually taking one, so. My appreciation's too. Um.
Well, that is, that's what they're there for. They're there to support districts, so.
Right, and free is good.
And free is good.
Okay. Uh, second reading, first vote on, oh, I have a question. So second read, first vote on um JFABD homeless students enrollment rights and services. And I was wondering who the um liaison homeless, do we have a homeless liaison? Who is responsible for that?
It's our school nurse.
Yeah, it's Katie Harrington.
Yep. In addition to everything else she does, she does that for us too.
Yeah. That's what happens at our small schools. There's no small job there.
Yes.
I'll motion to approve homeless students policy JFABD.
I'll second.
Discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
I'll motion to approve authorized signatures policy DGA.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Um, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I'll motion to approve policy implementation policy CH.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I'll motion to approve policy administration in policy absence C HD.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Um, okay, and then we have final votes on several. You wanna um?
I will motion for education opportunities for military children policy JFABE.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll motion to approve educational opportunities for children in foster care JFABF.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I will motion to approve student activities account policy JJF.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I will motion to approve policy on minutes B E D G.
I'll second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Can I just interject that doesn't that seem like a whole lifetime ago that we actually had policy committee meetings and talked about? Where is that other life? It just seems weird.
We want it back.
Yes, we do.
Um, future business. So we have a meeting scheduled for June eighteenth. Policy and School Committee. Joint Supervisory will meet in the interim, so we'll be able to talk more about that. Um, do we have a need for a May meeting? Does anybody feel like we need to add a meeting? Okay.
Well, only if you and the superintendent feel we need one.
I mean, I'm not, I'm, I will send out information about the um evaluation. And if there's anything else that comes up, um, Jackie's been handling the, all the, the food stuff was, which was the most emergent thing in my mind as we, you know, in the time that we were not meeting. So if anything comes up, then I will let y'all know and we can meet between now and then, but otherwise we will meet on June eighteenth.
I have a hope and a dream that that's actually in person. I'm not, I'm sure that's not probably true, but I keep on hoping and positive expecting that maybe we'll all be eating Stephen's cookies and him and sitting at a school committee meeting.
Sounds good to me. Um, future agenda items, anything that people want?
I have a question.
Yep.
Um, after that email I sent out the other, maybe it was last night about the, the leaky roof thing. I'm curious if the school committee would be willing to try and find our own roofing contractor to look at it, look at the roof. And that does not include the buildings committee. It only includes the school committee. You can ponder that.
I'm not, I know why you're saying that. My inclination is to be hesitant because.
As the school committee, we are actually in charge of the school building.
Right.
We, I already checked, we can do that. I checked with the town administrator.
What thoughts do people have?
Why, what is the problem with involving the buildings committee?
I would just like to see somebody besides our current roof inspector slash roof installer slash repairers have somebody go up there and look at it that's not them.
So could we ask the buildings committee for a second opinion?
You can, I will not, even though I'm on the committee. I don't feel comfortable with that.
So, well, well, I, I mean, I think as a school committee, I think we can all ask that we would like a second opinion. But I do think that there is a role for the buildings committee as well and especially in this time of turmoil, the more we can work with people and together, I think the better we are.
I appreciate your frustration, Steve. I mean, I'm sure that Jackie is frustrated with the puddle that reappears. So.
And well, and the, the problem we have right now is that, you know, luckily we have the custodians going in there for some, but like, if that was just sitting there on that floor, it's such a beautiful floor. And like, I think I've told you a million times. When I had the appraiser in there for something else six years ago, he told me that he's, there's not another floor really like this in New England anymore. And if it gets ruined, it's, it's done. Cause it's all iron planks and individual wood strips. It's like crazy town beautiful. But it's, it's starting to buckle and ripple where that puddle is and.
All right, I, I'm good with asking the buildings committee to find a second opinion.
You want, Steve, do you want me to do that?
Nope, I can, I'm on it. I'll, I'll do that.
So is it fair to say that, I mean, that's also, is it fair for us to say that that's with our backing as the school committee?
Because there, and there's more to it, you know, and it, I guess it's, it just, but I, I don't know. I think like on my hierarchy of needs, like it's, it's like up and down in my brain, but the other problem we're having is, and we're being really vocal, Stephen, you know about this, is that the way that the roof was attempted to be fixed is that water now pours off it like a waterfall into the front sidewalk. So now our front sidewalks are heaving, even though they were just fixed. But because they were not fixed the same, they're all starting to heave again. So we've had several people fall. People have come to look at that. But then, when it pours off like a waterfall and then freezes, then it's icy. So like, the, the remedies they're doing are creating more problems. Again, in comparison to not being at school, it's nothing. But like in reality for the building, it's like really frustrating. But I don't know, like, like Bruce, I don't know with, if MSBA, all of those grants, if what's even happening with that right now, right? Like I have no clue.
I'm confident the MSBA will continue to do what they're doing. It's whether we get invited again this year because they keep kicking the goalpost down the road.
Yeah.
But we've also, to Steve's point, we had um some people on that roof. The town has had some people on that roof that really know roofs. And the way that uh roof is designed is very difficult to detect leaks, number one, and even more difficult to repair leaks. Because uh, it's kind of built upside down. The membrane's on the bottom. And you know, it could, there could be a roof, a leak way up on the top side. And it's presenting itself down on the bottom side just because of the nature of that roof. So, so it's, you know, it's, that's why I got my fingers crossed this year that we'll get a roof because like, like Jackie said, it needs a comprehensive repair and gutters and everything else fixed, so it's functioning properly and it's not overflowing on the, on the sidewalk. And it's properly draining off the roof and down to a spot where it should go and not, and not where people walk. So.
Ben, I, I don't remember the, um, well, and the schedule might be different now, but when did, does MSBA normally announce their?
Normally they would be out um looking at things. It's usually, it's usually vacation week for our school, so it's sometime this week, next week. Um, I got a call into them and I hopefully I'll hear back. And as soon as I do, I'll email you all to let you know what their schedule is because, you know, as, as far as I can tell, their financial situation's good enough to move forward with the projects that they would normally do. So it's just, it's just a waiting game and it should be culminating pretty soon. So.
Would it help to send the SBA additional materials or information to tell them about the situation?
Um, we sent a significant packet of material. I think the help that we might be able to do is to contact um Joe Commerford, Senator. And um, your local representative there and see if they can, they can get some and provide some leverage, some persuasion to the MSBA that this is a a worthwhile project and it's a needy project. So.
Well, and I think it's worth noting that we would have qualified for two years in a row, except that they changed the criteria.
Yes.
So.
So Lauren, would you be willing to maybe draft a letter and um I, I could make a motion so that we have maybe uh, a, a sense of the whole committee supporting the urgency of a fixed replacement of our roof because it's urgent. That's a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all, uh, any discussion? I mean, what's happened? We, we just had?
We need a roof.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay.
Thank you, Lauren.
Sure. Um, okay, so future agenda items. Does anybody have anything that, that you want to make sure is on our future agenda?
No, but I put something in the chat. I forgot to say that MCAS is canceled.
Oh yeah, I forgot that too.
That's how high on our priority list that is.
Exactly.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you. So we'll, um, what time is it? I'm looking at the wrong wrist.
Eight nineteen.
Eight nineteen. So let's adjourn.
Thank you, Jackie. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you, everyone.
You all.
Thank you, Jackie. Thanks, Jen.
Thank you, Katie.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, everybody.
Bye.
Everybody, safe travels on your commute home.
Watch out for that, yeah.
Long trip going upstairs, huh?
Good night.
Jackie, can, can I send you, um, can I just type up and send you what I said at the beginning so that you can share that?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, definitely.
Um, cause I, you know, they're not gonna, they're not gonna watch our meeting. Watch the recorded session.
Why not?
They would love it. They would love that.
Okay. Um, and I'm gonna throw in something about Gail too because
Yep.
I knew that there, I mean, I'm sure that there are lots of, and you know, Matt and Andy, I mean, there are so many layers of people.
It's like the Oscar speech, you know, you always forget somebody.
I know. Well, I tried to say, you know, I know there are people are not, are not mentioned because I, I don't even know all the things that are being done. I can only speak to what I know and I know there's more than what, what I know. So
Yeah.
I'll send that to you and if you can just like pass that on to your.
I will. And the other, the one other thing Lauren is like, I'm not sure what to do about this hand washing fountain because I know that it's coming from like a super good place. But at the same time, she's like really persistent in emailing me and I like don't have the time to be like.
I can, I can email her and say that it's not something that we can address right now. I can, I can email her and say that it's not something that we can address right now because of all of the emergent issues. I think she can understand that. I think she's trying to be helpful and.
Yes.
Um, thinks that this would be really helpful and it would, except that there are logistics. Involved and you know, it's not something that just will magically happen and nobody has the um, anything.
Like that would be a great thing for us to do during like July.
The summer? Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like the perfect thing for that time. And then maybe it could even be installed before the fall, you know, that would be cool, but.
Oh, um, I will just share with her that um. That we're getting to it. Uh, you know, that, that we've talked about it and that, that we will talk about it more, but that we can't really fully address it right now.
Definitely.
Okay, great. Bye. Thank you.
Night. Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.